All right. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, November eighteenth, regular board work session for the Gresham Barlow School District. We are meeting here today in Cal, the Center for Advanced Learning. And a roll call, we have all board members in attendance except for Myra Gomez. We have Blake Peterson, Sean Perrins, Holly Regelman, Chris Howitt, Kathy Keatley, and Amanda Roscoe Beach. I want to make real clear that Myra is excused for tonight. She had a scheduled, rescheduled, rescheduled event that landed on tonight. So she will get caught up on what we're doing after the, after she gets back from that. We have a meeting agenda. And one of the things that I would like to request when we do the approval of the meeting agenda is I would like to move up item C up to the first thing that we're going to do since we've had some guest speakers that are going to be here today. So is there a motion to approve the agenda moving item C up to our first item of discussion?
I'll move to approve the meeting agenda moving C information items before B action items.
Your second? Okay. Then moved by Blake, seconded by Kathy to approve the meeting agenda moving the C one update on school resource officer program up above the action items. Any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Five, alright, thank you. So we have with us tonight the principals from Gresham High School and San Barlow High School. We are going to be hearing some updates on the SRO program at the respective high schools. Board members are in small group with them. The superintendent's will, or the principals will switch. And then the superintendent will give an update as well when we get back into the single group. So with that, I'm going to go join my group. We are on camera still. It may be a little bit difficult to hear conversation, but we'll do the best that we can. So, alright, take it away.
The question that we have is, I think what's going on. Oh really?
John U.
So you guys are ready? So I think what's going well is obviously having presidents at the school. Just to provide the needed. I think outreach. Our SRO has been part of full council. We've had to receive new learners at Barlow because we had everybody else kind of pivoted up into different positions. Our SRO, the officer, working device, student had a broken device, they said change him out. I should have brought equipment, John Allison was our first. And also, I know that we may not have seen how many of those students down in kind of home, there's checks. They get a team day draw, so trying to call, trying to figure out what's going on. Primary, obviously that's sort of what we're saying, so providing, having to, you know, check. Those students, that's been pretty effective, building relationships with parents, so see four classes. Because it only allows them to have conversations with the student. Uh, social class, class, that's a really hard word, so that's only will come about in the fact, actually, I don't choose a real wide, more than safety. So those, they're out in the halls, they're passing time, most of the time, things that are, kind of presence. The names being this president, which is just doing a lot of power, each time, it's the officer Gavin Saster, our SRO. Providing, providing, uh, testing jobs, doing health, Barlow classes, they have to help classes, he was about fourteen hours, talking about, healthy choices. So, safe choices, they can make. And that's it, actually. You know, yes. And then next piece now, there's a lot of consequences to this. So again, I actually, you know, I worked in education now, this is my seventeenth year. And I always had, I always had, he always goes over, and I think, looking at the different, first of all, he's made good SRO choices. So when I started off, it was our SRO program was, unless it's more than Russia. And then towards, there is a pretty big separation between, to try and get them on the streets along the different, I can tell. So I think that's something that we can definitely do when we talk about, there's an adult who's related in this officer situation. How they can be mentors, always there, provides support for students. When I went off the walls. He, he, he doesn't, he doesn't interact himself.
No, but I mean, he, he also knows that.
I guess, oh yeah, because I got chair of school, we've had those conversations. He has school, was out, which was kind of the good and the bad, because, I mean, honestly, there's things that they didn't have at school.
Yeah. This is the pool table, right?
This is.
And right now we're.
Great conversation.
Because.
Alright, so Bruce come on over.
I'll answer your question alright.
Yeah, thank you, great, thank you.
I have another question. Funny one for team.
I did.
A lot of them.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
Not trying to.
Name was mine and Greg just.
John, see you met with the president. You go out on like that shirt. Yeah.
I'm sorry, sure. My color is red.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah. Like how you doing? Good to see you.
Um, yeah.
Alright, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right.
Uh, so, um. Let me just give background.
Yeah, I mean.
That was.
And so I'll just. I'll stop about what's going on.
Uh, initially.
I think that outreach.
Share it off in certain places and then in two thousand and seven.
Part of the leadership.
You know.
Yeah.
President Booze Department.
Ten day.
Uh, at that time or ten years on Rasmussen. We don't know if that's our own that he turned around. Uh, in the center S R O. Fantastic, fantastic. He has to have, um, that's uncovered as an exact way since in the counseling. Short three year that I've been to. What he grew up. Just being able to. Uh, so key information. Uh, we can figure out how it's best getting it. What teams and. And I thought like that it could work. Um, uh, just support our students there. Have their areas of unconsciousness. Years of hours with the super well. Uh, Barlow ground. I, I know Jeff's. He was at the Super Bowl. And now we have a.
A huge part of our.
It's also.
How bad.
Turkey. I've noticed since he was about fourteen.
Turkey giving when he was a freshman at Barlow.
So there's obviously some personal ties.
They're really helping that piece out.
Have some great challenges and understanding for the understanding, correction, understanding.
Um, and then I feel so sad. Overall, to say great group that have been. Since. All the ser.
Just get kind of all.
Just the presence sometimes deter the person from. Trying to do something that they should and, and, and. You can go with the whole.
I don't know. We, we go ahead and now we have so, um. Or at school, I mean, whenever that was saving two thousand. I've never. We're about eighteen thousand students, um, and so. Uh, and then two thousand and seven. Um, and that's when I came on as Mr. Fred, and so we'll call on, obviously, if we had S R O, we had a. A little source officer, but I wasn't. It's targeted some classroom. That didn't run out of attention, sorry, Mr. Few, but, um. Um. Uh, I think. But it, but two thousand and seven, we were about, you know, ten hundred kids.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we teach it.
Just like I said, they have a group here, you know, like I said, I've worked.
I've never.
Back to.
Yeah. But now we're about seventeen.
Um, and education, um, starting at.
Precious Sally.
Someone half again.
So we do.
Um, it had an S R O, um, thanks to police officers basically, but.
Uh, in terms of what's not really well. Um, since two thousand and seven, I probably got Officer Rasmussen. They kind of get.
Where do you.
That I oversee student management, student management.
They were there just to run.
And that's where.
These were so hard.
Was.
These officers, office was.
Again, the.
So, um.
Just the.
Cars also.
Have people go.
Okay, and somebody is here to, you know, make sure we're safe, but, uh.
What.
Um, they, they, they.
And we operate under two separate.
They could find out that he was.
They're based for support for the legal system of law.
Then you have base, that's one of the policies, part of his.
Right.
Um, because he would take them.
None of our S R Os have ever really been interested in getting involved in school policy.
Well, uh, we're not just.
It's just a different hour.
It's so fast.
Started his case.
It's where it's.
It was a good thing for, um, and it was sort of a student school that felt like we needed to understand the legal.
Police a little bit more, um, you know, and so, uh, it was a great thing. Twenty-five and thirty kids.
So we, we have set that foundation.
Hands and we.
Really people out.
Uh, it's a few groups.
Um, and there are honestly things that we.
For school that helps out.
And so it was just a.
Pro our purposes.
Mentors.
Now, yes, they were there to handle business when we.
Yeah, that's right.
Business.
We have.
Suspicion, um, it was always an atmosphere.
Twice.
And we.
Where you.
Taking kids out to longer places and having conversations with their parents.
When I get off.
Our, our S R Os.
Uh, they should check in on them.
It was always, you know, wasn't our fault.
No.
Yeah, that's been on shoes.
So.
Uh, struggles.
That's been so.
So that was, that is, that was something.
So.
And, and the next place I went to from there after this, after David's.
Um.
That's, you know, we share.
So that's where the.
That's how.
So they weren't having.
The other things we've had.
And S R Os.
It's very.
That was almost a good, like, and very intuitive being involved.
Being around the turnip school.
Uh, so with them paying more of a.
Classes.
You know, check in with some.
Uh, around.
You know, it's not a, not a.
Come check out.
Me.
Uh, it was more.
In there driving.
Let me check in with some legalities.
I know or.
Some.
Some issues out there.
As I've got their name.
Uh, my name.
He's got us about a street.
Hey, keep going down this road.
Class.
Um, as we asked.
So it wasn't that.
Comes in.
Hey, I know that you did first name.
Start on a.
Well, we have it was more.
Two years.
Don't see them.
Same.
Kind of.
A register.
But it's not this.
Experience of somebody that's there.
Let's talk about some ways to.
Projects.
Hey.
Uh, so.
You know, obviously.
Really kind of ramped up.
They had to do it.
They made.
An officer staff.
Um, it was more of a.
Uh, around.
Talk to you about.
Basically, it's about who's.
Not.
But could be helping.
Around, you know, as rising.
Stay at this.
When you're twenty-five.
Anytime they have students that are.
Just kind of teaching them.
Those violations.
Um.
He.
Then as I transitioned over into Park Road.
Talks about, uh.
It, it was.
Minor possessions.
Cynicism.
Very driving.
Where.
Uh, same.
He just happens to be twenty-five.
Them, he's arresting them.
It was checking on their tenants and their grades.
Explaining what the situation of.
Kids that made their goal once a month.
Uh, the sunshine.
But their grades.
They would take them to like.
Great.
High.
Big fossil.
He really takes an active role.
Foot off.
About those things and they would have like five hundred, two thousand dollars.
Sean, that's usually she's a first step, always.
And so again, right whole cop class at the time, not to present town kids.
Sam would take.
Always asking for.
Fred Myers.
Yeah, I see.
Car that's.
Shoes.
Uh.
Stuff for your home.
He.
He took the football homes.
So they were hanging here and around.
Versus.
Nances.
Students will be participating.
You know, let's leave.
You know, let's get them.
So he is literally there.
You know, they can incentivize.
Trying to go.
Work with the sunshine producing program.
Making sure that they have closure.
And then it would send kind of.
Um, so again, when we talk about.
Sharing it.
Well, different.
Not every.
Officer is bad.
Breaking these things like that when more mentorship or like incentivizing.
Those are so bad.
There's, there's a case law that they're working.
Now, obviously, if I have to do this business.
You don't want to need to, but they're there as mentorship.
Does your program.
It's not as a.
It's usually a four year basis or not.
Yes.
Here's.
I'm just there to support.
He is the one I called.
But so.
Um, so when you're talking about. Uh, there, there, there is, there is a job shadow.
Bring it on.
And when they look, um, they.
It's usually a four year rotation.
Kids who say, hey, I'm.
Uh.
This year it's a fit because, um, what I personally requested is to.
To, to.
Get the incentive.
Uh, because we won't.
Carnival last year.
Coming back.
Maybe they have.
Now, maybe they don't even want to have a brand new.
I started with a movie.
So.
Just different ways.
So they, they, they kind of honored that request.
And not just have that consistency.
Are.
Uh. They leave the jobs up for bid in the department. Um, and then individuals that are interested in applying will come out or do a job shadow and walk through.
Or.
Their interests.
Maybe they're.
As.
Firing.
That. As.
Same.
Yes, I really wanted to do that.
As when they came out, they could have walked.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm.
I'll answer it this way.
I thought it might be.
That.
How many.
R S R O.
You know, um, each time that the jobs.
Love.
There might be two candidates.
Love.
Um, and, and a lot of times, uh, the candidates that are interested.
And they'll.
Come out as a second officer for football.
I think.
Basketball game.
Way that he.
Uh, and be around the students and be around their beds, uh, to get an idea.
And so.
Right or wrong, in, in my experience, um. We've had.
Want to make sure.
Um, I met with, uh, the sergeant.
And so that's what sees.
That was sometimes most central occasion.
When that time comes up.
Uh, to talk about the potential candidates that are.
And I.
And also.
The.
A year's quality.
May so.
At least.
That's.
Personally really interested.
And I.
Background. Uh, and we have those conversations prior to.
Put more parameters.
So going forward, what would you.
That makes sense.
You kind of.
Um, I think that. You know, I, I do want to say one thing, I mean.
I think that our.
You talked about.
They're.
Certain areas that, um, are not going well. Um, I can't speak to.
I think.
That.
Good.
Aren't doing well.
Uh, because they don't have, um.
Again, like.
A lot of those students that have.
And suppose trying.
Uh, but I don't want to just tell them that that we do have students in Barlow that have experienced trouble with police.
Um, whether that's.
It's just like I said to the individuals.
Here.
We have good teachers.
And we have that.
Um, whether that's.
Real police officers.
Right.
Um, and I do know that there are students.
I'm not saying he's a bad.
Of.
Well, but I'm just saying that when we.
Have to clear people's roles, there have been.
You know, sometimes we as a leader have to step in.
They don't think we.
Eyes like that.
Um, but it has.
But I have done differently.
To.
Push that.
Work those first so that they don't.
But I am going to recognize.
Go down that road or students.
And so I think that that's.
A lot of that falls in my hands, right?
I believe.
Um, so.
And then we say, what does that look like?
Better.
Can one question. After. You're gonna ask us the same thing. Conversations. The different perspectives was.
There are always going to be.
Police. In your experience, you have lots.
So how do we really look at.
Her.
Different.
Having those conversations.
And whatnot.
With your experience.
What.
Has there been a specific situation where students distressed and police.
So I mean, I think that's a.
Directly. Due to something that. As our. Versus.
Yeah.
I was.
There will always be someone that someone needs to interact at, how do you interact with.
Are you talking about the question you're talking about in my whole experience?
And I think.
Police officers need to hear the kids' stories, um, and get to hear those experiences, uh, to understand the impact of.
That's not what that looks like.
Um, I think that's fair.
Not trust the.
Students to understand.
Oh, it's like what police officers want us to.
Distrust. And. Oh. Due to.
And what that.
That S R is.
Their perspective and what they see.
I'm gonna answer.
So those are some things that I think we could do better. Uh, is being able to open that dialogue.
Even this.
That's a.
Head fight officers, whether that's.
S R officers in general.
Um, although it's perceived. They did talk about distrust. We still believe the officer. So I know, um, the, um. Uh, there was. Pretty familiar about officers. I don't have. Did. They have. I think it was gonna have. Offits and I don't know. Multiple that. All ours for this year. Uh, both by. Is there pretty much. Such a. Perpetuate that only you've come.
Um, I have, I have heard.
I think we have to.
Directly.
Students.
So. Uh, yeah.
The officers.
Having several conversations about that.
The. And you.
Just because it's not in a full.
Probably said a few things about the.
Uh.
He has.
All of his.
Should.
Down lanes.
The family.
It is a.
One casual. Challenger to. Um.
It's a little.
Interpretate that more.
So.
Situation.
And I think.
By example.
Home.
That has spread.
Uh, and just the outward perception of.
Traitor.
I see a police officer, this is what I.
The short end there.
Blackling the form.
There is.
They've.
Whether I agree with disagree with.
That.
Something.
Where's. Best. He still has his firearms. He still has his, his.
But we also had a big.
Radio and all that.
It was.
So. Um.
So that has caused.
It's.
Many staff. Many staff have come to.
Uh, one thing I will say is, um.
So the short.
There have been some very challenging situations this year. And we haven't had a lot of fights per se. We have fights, but, um, so rampant. Uh, but we had more fights.
One student.
For two thousand and nineteen.
Thousands.
And it's thousands, it's not.
I'll tell you this, um, I've had more students.
There is a.
Different.
Teachers. Because of their actions in the classroom, then I have people being wound pretty tight.
I understand. Just because of their interactions with the.
Uh, being away from setting like school where there's seventeen hundred eighty kids. Whether you.
You know, not that I'm.
For.
Nothing that.
Just come to my head.
Time.
This is happening now. We're gonna take a break.
Hard to make.
Right, you know what I mean? Um, I, I mean, I, I worked. And I just relate to my days at, at Park Road.
What's going on in the community is.
And it's some of these schools.
Things that we must do for them, right?
Semitize that shock with a comment, sometimes it's.
Wow.
Type, you know, so.
Temperature.
They, they would.
Or now.
How can I be a next to.
Faces of.
Right.
And, and it was all because of the incentive, obviously, right?
I mean, I work five hundred.
And I.
Do a safety.
Right.
Um, and so.
Our school is safe, but I feel.
I, I think that.
That I know that if something happens, I have.
Just like.
Responders.
In the adult or the kid interaction.
Relationship where to have to call.
Into.
Um, an emergency situation.
We're mad or.
Yeah.
We're in an attitude.
City.
Um, yeah.
They S R O.
We're in a.
Forcing a law, and that's generally.
Rule or whatever, because somebody.
On the last year, I've never seen you like say, okay, yeah, right?
I mean, right? I mean, it just doesn't happen with anything.
That's a thermometer, that's.
S R O.
Is.
Let's see, whatever. Um, and so.
A principal.
Yeah, principal, right? Uh, so I do not, I don't.
People are.
Be one.
Tell them they can.
You know, and unfortunately sometime.
S R O.
Hope so. Uh, and so.
That's.
And I'm saying, yes, you know, yes. But I can tell you a lot of other stories of other people who make them mad.
Okay, okay. Um, what's the. I'm so. Often. That I do.
Your current.
Challenge.
Yeah.
I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
He was a challenge, they participated in that. So.
How are they involved or what is their.
We.
Yeah, I think again, that comes back to the whole.
The law foundation, you know, big foundation.
I think that.
It was a three day experience. We had a hundred.
Different.
Different hats in two thousand and days. Uh, it was professionally facilitated, it's an opportunity.
Sometimes just by default.
Students to share experiences that they had.
Open up.
Harder this because I've been there.
I remember the situation.
If they mentor a high.
By in our S R O, it's just.
A race.
That.
This city.
Then.
Somebody says, hey, you know, something.
That kind of.
Saying makes it from.
But.
disadvantages they have or advantages that.
Coming up.
These aren't correct.
Others.
So.
You know, that's just.
And the.
For them.
Was a. The group.
I think.
That are getting together.
I think sometimes.
They have much more income.
Default.
Than.
They're.
They're part of.
Uh, but do they.
It was.
Awesome day.
Do they inform us if Lieutenant Rasmussen came?
Because they have sales came.
Maybe we're not pretty.
Gavin came.
Yes. Absolutely. I think he was off the road here that year. The man in me, uh, I will tell you that, um, it was a pretty rough time in, uh, in ceiling area. It was, uh, disturbing. People, opioid epidemic, bet, uh, there were a lot of challenges that we were facing.
Do I think that our opioid epidemic is for?
Uh, we had a depth, we had a depth of something.
No, it's all made up.
It was really, really hard and healing.
Short check.
Very hard. Uh, and just his doing it. That's great. Uh, and in terms of establishing what that SRO does and building.
So if you have your vision for.
Visions, uh, were some things that, you know, I paid close attention to. Be my assistant first of all.
Right.
I was doing all the storage of chess history, uh, but just kind of paying attention to watch. Um, so you know.
All right, so, um, I think what we do, sounds like a problem. Um, I want for there to be, if someone from our table would like to give you any insight or on just what we talked about a little bit.
Oh, one from a life slave relationship. I think I'll receive that.
And we'll have that take as well, just a little quick.
A lot of claims within this tree.
How we did make it back together in our bigger group of, you guys.
Why? You do. Yeah. It's, um.
We'll, uh, make sure that similar policies will be also saying, and.
Sounds awesome.
That we're gonna do.
Doesn't sound, sounds great. It's either that or go home and be in a bedroom, so.
All right, you're here, all right, that's the letter. All right, so.
Yeah, we're sorry.
You rattled, okay, all right, so we're.
And I think in that whole, that's a paragraph that just. Ceiling to two walls. It's interesting. And very complex, this is a little.
I don't mind.
It's not good. No, it's like. Interesting is where, how are your difficulties? And unique spaces. Like the walls are dark, it's a dark gray. Just.
I don't know.
It's here.
Oh, wow.
You would think just the opposite, yeah?
She's. She's. I can hear your house. I have.
No. True story. That was just, I think that's the situation. I think.
Yeah.
But I think actually this is true.
Like just.
Yeah.
There's a question.
This.
Unless it's a different.
Students who receive four point dollars. They're not going to. Students who have a point five, a point seven. Our SRO never gave them credit. With the school.
I could just go back to.
When we talk about the fail on rates of students covered. And we talk about sports class of our students covered. Those definitely get a lot of. Is that. And you do it so. And educators, educators. That's what we're talking about. Because I don't know not one SRO that I can correct. So I'll just say that.
All right, so, um, so we've had our conversation with the principals and, um, in a couple of minutes I'll have, uh, they both on each of the tables give a little bit of, of reactions, things they learned, uh, things they want to have more information about as well. Um. So there's something, I was just thinking about. Um. We asked a question about what was going well in their school with the SROs and also what opportunities they saw for change or improvement with that. And we're not going to go into a whole lot of detail about that now. That's something that we will, we'll look at as we move forward with this. Um, no decision is being made tonight in that. This was just an information gathering. So, um, anybody would like to say something about what their group heard from either of the, the principals? Put you on the spot for just a second. Either volunteer or call on somebody. Like. Unless you want to pass.
I think you debriefed it well. Uh, the approach has been, how do we improve this? Going forward, I didn't hear from either a principal, uh, an opinion that we should be rid of the SRO program. And so much of our conversation had to do with how do we improve it? How do we get the, the right community voice in, um, informing us what that MOU should look like? And, uh, and of course, that's an operational decision, so.
All right, let me say, we'll talk to you in a minute.
I would agree that, um, it's all about, you know, relationships and building relationships. And, uh, I, I did also hear from both principals that it has been, and that while we have a responsibility to evaluate all programs and their efficacy, if there's a rub anywhere, we need to figure it out, but that they are an asset to schools. And, um, you know, we just always look for opportunities to change and both of them are open to do that. Not change, always improving, however we can improve a program.
Anyone else have a comment? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hugh and give us a little bit more, uh, continuing about the, uh, changes moving forward, uh, modifications, as it were. And, uh, the principals are still staying for a few more minutes, so.
They gotta listen to me, that's part of.
Part of the deal.
It's part of being here tonight. But I want to thank Principal, Principal Sheldon and Principal Schmidt for being here tonight and engaging with the board on an important conversation and topic. To Vice Chair Howard and Directors, uh, I'm here tonight to talk about our Gresham Borough School District SRO program. This is a complex issue. There are certain differences in various opinions on this issue. And our students are speaking their truth based on their experiences. So thank you to our students. I want the school board and community to know the following. Per our current intergovernmental agreement or IGA, and in consultation and collaboration with the district leadership team, the Gresham High School Principal Chris Shelton and Gresham Police Chief Travis Bogart, the school resource officer at Gresham High School has been reassigned. I also want the school board and the community to know, after a review of the 2019 incident at Gresham High School, it is apparent to me that the school district placed the school resource officer in a very challenging position. The school district is solely responsible for student management and discipline, not school resource officers. While I cannot go back in time, I'd like to apologize to all involved. Going forward, is my expectation that there are clear parameters that are set and followed when it comes to the role of the school resource officer and the role of the school administration. I also want to address complaints that have been recently brought forward to our attention. First, a student shared that a Gresham High School staff member told them that they would end up like Breonna Taylor if they had a substance found on them. The district is aware that that statement was made, is inappropriate, and it has been addressed. It has also been alleged that the school resource officer made a house visitation without the school knowing. We have investigated the matter and the school resource officer was acting within his duties as a Gresham police officer. Students have also shared that they are not feeling supported by some staff, by some school staff. We need to take into consideration our students' lived experiences and we're continually working to meet their mental health needs. We're working to provide a series of resources to our students during this time, including twice weekly advisory periods, increased mental health partnerships, partnering with Care Solace to more quickly connect families with mental health providers, initiating affinity groups for students and using state and federal funding to hire an additional 12 school counseling positions. Students having access to mental health professionals is of critical importance, now more than ever. Mentally healthy students contribute to a safe school environment. However, this cannot be at the expense of the school resource officer program. Both mental health professionals and school resource program have a vital role to play in keeping our students safe. Safety is everyone's responsibility. So, the school resource officer program is critically important to our school district. In 2020, our thought exchange discussion showed overwhelmingly support for the program. School resource officer programs in general reduce the need for schools to call 911 during an emergency. School resource officers are a resource for their entire community, both of the students and our staff. The school resource officer program ensures that there's a partnership with the school district, school, in, in case of an emergency. Our school resource officer programs prevent or minimize property damage on school campuses. And school resource officers are an essential part of our school safety equation. Moving forward, I expect that we will explore engaging students at both comprehensive high schools in a program called Face-to-Face PDX. It's designated to, and designed to build trust between the police and our communities. Amy Johnson, our executive, the executive director of the nonprofit, has been in contact with myself and Chief, uh, Gresham Police Chief. Secondly, we will hire an independent third-party consultant to hold focus rooms to evaluate and improve our school resource officer program. This will not be performative, but will also, uh, review data from our staff, students, and district. Third, I will direct this district leadership team to engage with the Gresham Police Department to carefully review and make improvements to a future intergovernmental agreement or IGA for the board's review leading this spring. Adjustments to the agreement, which in my belief are necessary, include clearly defined roles for school resource officers and school staff, clear description of administration versus police-related searches, school improvement in the interview process, evaluation, and annual reviews. This concludes my update. If you have any questions, general thoughts, or feedback for me as we continue to move forward.
So questions or comments from the board? And I have a couple, so, like.
Uh, Mr. Hugh, are you considering an, an AR of any kind that, uh, that informs staff responsibilities as it relates to their interactions with the school resource officer?
I think first, we will, I am planning to direct Mr. Cook, since he is the Assistant Superintendent for K-12 schools, to work directly with our building administrators so that our administrators know and understand their role in student management and discipline, which is different than what our school resource officers. And then, as we move through that process, as we get some information from our community when we bring in our consultant, if that does come forward, I will be making a recommendation for administrative role, uh, which will outline the expectations.
Anything else, Blake, or?
Not right now.
Okay. So, um, I want, uh, so you mentioned having a review, uh, for part of that. And I know that, um, Myra was recommending a process that they had used at North Clackamas and I think, I think West Lynn Wilsonville also used a similar process, um, where there were a few more people involved in the conversation, the review about the intergovernmental agreement. And it's a fine line because as board members, we, we do not get involved in operations. That's, that's just kind of, that's our holy grail. We don't do operations. However, there have been times when in other service contracts, which is what the SRO contract is, it's a service contract, board members have been involved. Um, the childcare contract, which we used to have a million zillion years ago, I'm not even sure we have that anymore. Um, but food service has also been one, that board members have been involved in the committee with that, as well as a parent, uh, staff members. Um, I don't remember if students were involved with the food service one, but we would, uh, Myra has strongly requested, and I, uh, support that as well, that as we go through this review, making sure that we include some other folks, and she had a format for how they did that, and make sure that they were getting additional input on what were people looking for out of the program? And then recognizing in the final analysis, the superintendent would be held responsible for the contract at that point. But having this increased, uh, uh, input to it as well, so.
I, I have not had an opportunity to reach out specifically to, uh, an independent consultant. I was given a few names, I know a few people, so I don't have that information at this point, but I'm aware of that conversation by the chair and plan to include that conversation with, uh, any consultants.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Blake.
Yeah. Chris, you brought up the operational element of this, and I kind of want to emphasize that, um, the school resource officer program asked with any of our contract services is an operational contract, which means it's under the purview of the superintendent and his administrative team. Obviously, this has strategic and, and even, even political implications, uh, this particular program. And that's why it's come to the board. The other element that affects the board is our oversight of district operations. And student safety is the first goal of this district. And so all I would want to communicate publicly, which is, is held as a respectful assurance, um, you know, a mutually respectful relationship that we enjoy with our superintendent and, and your wonderful staff, is that student safety will be an accountability measure for this, for this district. You've been put in a very, very challenging spot, and we're grateful that you are up to the challenge of leading us through it. Student safety will be an accountability measure, and, and that's, uh, so the decisions you make going forward, you know, um, certainly, that's, that's implied.
Any other comments or anything, um? Um, he said that Gresham High apparently being very sorry. Do we have anyone that Gresham?
No.
Do we know one?
Um, there will not be another, uh, resource officer at Gresham High School. We're gonna have to, uh, discuss, and I think Mr. Cook has been discussing with, uh, Mr. Sheldon and Mr. Schmidt about how that organization is gonna happen. Uh, we plan on having schools covered and we plan on having a district, uh, to continue to be a safe place for kids, so. Um, but we have, again, with my consultation with the, with the chief, we all agree that, um, at this point, um, reassigning the officer was in the best interest of everyone.
Catherine, just to be clear, we won't have an SRO aggression ever? No, just until the end of the, this contract expires.
June 30th.
June 30th. So will there be additional campus monitor support?
I think that, um, Mr. Cook and with the Sheldon have had a new conversation about what that might look like. I have, uh, shared my opinion with them on how we move forward with that. And, uh, I do know that, uh, you all have an interest in my future, that Gresham continues to be a safe place for students, first and foremost, as Director.
Yeah, yes. I'm sure. We'll talk more in detail with these two, and I was also waiting for this board meeting, for this board session to be finished, to make anything formal. Uh, but it'll be a kind of a shared during emergencies or during a real need, a shared with the officer that's currently at Barlow. That'll be the responsible, it won't, it won't be an immediate response for sure, but that's, that's the backup plan. And then the other plan is what every other school would do, is it's a 911 call if we need that, which is concerning, given delays and personal experience.
But just, just one point of clarification, our school resource officers not just support Gresham High School, they're supporting feeder middle schools, they're supporting Spring Water Trail. So while they're housed at certain high schools, our school resource officers are really a resource to our entire school community. And so this is actually something that we have to consider as we're kind of looking at how to best support, not just Gresham High School, but all of our schools in the district. Because at any given time, there could be a crisis emergency and our school resource officers have, you know, done a really good job on supporting not just Gresham Borough schools, but actually other schools in the region as they kind of some pretty horrific issues that have happened.
All right, any other comments on this? All right, if not, we'll take just a couple of minutes, get the tables kind of redone and let Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Sheldon leave. Thank you so much for coming this evening, we appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
I'm sure your door is. Yeah, so I assume the door is open and any of us, if we have any questions, can contact you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Sheldon, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. We are returning from our break the Gresham Barlow School District on the number 18th Board Work Session. Our next item of discussion is our policy review. First reading, and these are policies that have come out of the Policy Review Committee. And, oh, let's see, Mr. Cook, are you gonna list off which ones they are, or do you want me to?
Director Howitt, I'll go follow your lead.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna look at Policy AC Non-Discrimination, GBA Equal Employment Opportunity, GBEA Workplace Harassment, CBA Qualifications and Duties of the Superintendent, II BGA Electronic Communication Systems, and INDV Flag Displays and Salutes. And just for those watching, the the alpha characters, AC, GBA, et cetera, et cetera, don't actually mean anything. It's a sorting function. It's a filing function. So it's not like it's an acronym for something. So, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Vice Chair Howitt. I'll give a brief summary of the discussions that the Policy Committee had. I believe it was on October 18th. I think that's when our meeting was. Starting off with AC Non-Discrimination. Similar to GBEA, which we're gonna hear about in a minute, the Committee recommends accepting the addition of the phrase gender identity as well as the deletions of the years related to several federal statutes and legal reference deletions of sexual orientation and the addition of race. So very, OSBA just recommended some cleanup language, really, and the Committee adopted that language, or is recommending adopting that language. GBEA Equal Employment Opportunity. The Committee recommends accepting the addition of the phrase gender identity, which is an addition there, as well as the deletions of the years related to several statutes that are also there, and the legal reference deletion of sexual orientation and addition of race to the language. So very similar to one, or to the first AC one I went over. The third policy is GBEA Workplace Harassment. The Committee recommends accepting the addition of the phrase gender identity. Basically, just cleanup language again. CBA Qualifications and Duties of the Superintendent. The Committee did have a long discussion about this. This policy is also a leftover from April. We didn't finish what was recommended by OSBA. The license, Director Howitt, that you asked about in the policy meeting, which I just found out is called Professional Administrator License. So that's what licenses a superintendent. There is no separate superintendent's license, which was referenced in our language. The Policy Committee recommends adopting the qualifications language from the OSBA. Under Performance and Responsibilities, they recommend, you got, the Committee recommended changing the formatting from numbers to bullets for the listed qualifications because numbers suggested a rank order. So bullets was what you guys recommended in the Knowledge and Experience section. The Committee recommends adjusting the first sentence to end with leading because that fed into those bullets, leading different groups to, for district improvement. The wording of the sentences describing the characteristics was then adjusted to match the change of the word leading. So we made language adjustments within that section. And number five, Closed Achievement gaps, was adjusted to achieve more equitable outcomes. This language is a more assets and strengths-based way to say things. In II BGA Electronic Communication System, the OSBA recommends adding electronic communications. The Committee missed discussing a bracketed phrase of social media, so I'm pointing that out now, and we reviewed and went over our notes. And number five, we as an admin-leading team recommend keep, or adding it in. INDV Flag Displays and Salutes. This policy was remaining for the spring as well. The Committee recommends following the OSBA language, which adds a requirement to fly the POW MIA flag.
So on, let's just take care of the II BGA. Is there consensus that we include the social media bracketed language? So thumbs up for consensus that we can bring that forward to the, all right? So that would be recommended to bring that forward. Any other questions about the policies? In general, the ones that we did, we'll have more that we're gonna meet tomorrow and talk about. But any questions about these at this point?
No questions, just formatting. On AC, there needs to be a space between two and a. It looks like the word TOA. And on GBA.
Yeah, so that's on the fourth paragraph for a sentence.
GBA, there needs to be a space between and of.
Yeah, and those will be corrected, actually, when it gets submitted in, so those will, those will be caught by Sarah, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it would be caught. But thank you for check, for reading it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the policies? And just a reminder for folks. Most of our policies do have a long list of either Oregon Revised Statutes referrals as well as any state or federal case law that goes in with it, or federal acts that go in with it. So any information is available regarding the policy itself. And our policies are on our district website, gresham.k12.or.us under the Board section, and I believe it's called Board Policies. So if you wanna look at those. When the revisions are done, it may take a little bit of time before the final revised copy is put forward. But there are always, the policies are up there, available to be reviewed. So. All right, Mr. Cook, I believe, hold on about two. Are we also, oh, yes, we are. So anything about the things that are coming from the Policy Review Committee? No? All right. So the next one that we have up as well is.
So my, is there consensus that all of those are going to go forward for approval?
Yes, anything, so no questions. Those can go forward to the. Okay, so yes, so I wanna make sure for consent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, and then next, continuing with Mr. Cook. We have the Every Student Belongs policy that was put in place last year. But there's been some updates to that. So, Mr. Cook?
And I'll read the explanation to everybody.
Thank you.
In December of 2020, the DBSD School Board adopted the required All Students Belong policy, ACB. At that time, along with that policy, an administrative rule was also required, but none had been forwarded by the OSBA. Since the Board's adoption of the policy, the Oregon Legislature passed several changes and adjustments related to it, which delayed the release of the suggested AR. In October, the Board Chair requested that an administrative rule be written by the District Leadership Team and presented at the November 18th, 2021 Work Session. The DBSD Leadership Team wrote the required rules and was prepared to present. On November 2nd, 2021, the Oregon School Boards Association delivered an updated policy recommendation and a proposed AR draft. The OSBA policy recommendation changes and the new administrative rule will be presented to the DBSD Policy Committee for consideration at the November 19th, 2021 meeting. The OSB recommendations are attached. So, Vice Chair, we were really just gonna update the Board of, we had made progress, but that progress is now on hold so that the Committee can consider what the policy is.
Got it. Perfect, perfect, perfect. There are a couple of bracketed things, so the Committee will be looking at that tomorrow as well, on November 19th, and putting those in. And, and thank you for the explanation about why we just passed this one and it was coming back to us because the administrative regulation was not written at that time. So we will be reviewing that one tomorrow?
Yes, you will.
Any general questions about it before we go on? Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Cook actually developed and created the AR and actually spent a lot of time. And then the OSBA pushed forward an administrative rule that was as competent as the one that he wrote. So I think he's gonna be interesting.
Okay, all right.
I would have to say that the attorneys at OSBA probably did a better job superintending you.
Yes, constantly. All right. Okay, so with that, we will move on. So we've already had our update on the, we moved that forward. And so next, what we're going to try and have is just some general board training that will show up probably in the work sessions. We have new board members. We also have board members that came on, and then we immediately had COVID things. And so we, we've not really had an opportunity to do some general training. And Sarah and I have talked a little bit about what some of that looks like. And I think tonight, what we're going to do, and I talked about this with Myra as well, some of the things around, I think we've mentioned it, around email. Making sure, I think we've mentioned a couple of times, that when notices are sent to board members, the response is from the Board Chair. So we wanna make sure that board members are not replying in a way that makes it look like it's the Board that's, that's replying to it. If it's someone you know, if it's someone that you wanna acknowledge, hey, I saw your note, that would be fine. But just being cautious that folks can't always differentiate between what one board member says versus the Chair versus a board decision. So just being aware of that. If someone sends something to you that you realize that Myra has not been copied on it, send her note. And we have noticed as well, might wanna pass this on to Carla Gay. I've noticed quite a few email notes that are coming to the full Board and including Carla Gay because I think they're picking up Carla from an old email. And it's meaning to be Carla Paluso, and it's not. So just, I've replied back to a couple of people that have said, you've got the wrong Carla, and by the way, the person who's on the Board is Sean Ferret. So, so just kinda be aware of that. But it's, email is one of those things that's been around for board members for about 10 years. And prior to that, it went all directly to the Board Secretary, who then printed it out and distributed to board members. We did not have our own email. And so we continue to revise how that's going on. So it's just making sure that as people send us things that we're paying attention. I wanted to bring up also, I'll bring up probably in each of these relevant policies that come up at different times. And I think one right now, whenever you get an email, it's always a good idea to go look at a reference and policy, to see if there's something there that might be a reference to it. The big one that, that I think I want the Board to be real aware of is Policy KL and the accompanying administrative regulation that goes with that. And that's Public Complaints and Public Complaint Procedure. So do your homework, read that one, understand it. If you have any questions about it, you can ask me, you can ask Mr. Hugh, Mr. Cook, who is an expert on policy.
Oh, obviously, at the first meeting, thank you.
And so for me, you know, making sure that, that we read policy and understand it, make sure that we're on the same page. So, so that's always a good thing with that. What were some of the other things, Sarah, that we talked about? I have another one that we're gonna talk about, but do you remember, my notes are not here.
I was trying to look at the email.
I know, I know, that's, that's just it. So the other one that we can talk about a little bit is the process of the meeting. Motions, discussion, consent agenda, things of that nature. So we'll just do a quick rundown. A motion always needs to be stated for what it is you wanna ask the group to do. So I have been on many boards where the Chair will say, I need a motion to approve the agenda. The motion needs to be, I move, we approve the agenda. The motion is never so moved. That doesn't exist. That's, that's like putting your money on the free parking monopoly. It's not part of the rules. So in doing a, the motion, motion to approve the agenda. I need to have a motion for that. So someone would say, Holly.
My motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and I would need a second for that. All right, at that point, and I'm working with Myra on this, but anybody else who's the Chair, the Chair then repeats the motion. The motion has been made to approve the agenda, is presented, been moved by Holly, seconded by Kathy. That helps the Board Secretary know who said it because she's typing, she's listening, she can't always hear what we say. At that point, the motion no longer belongs to you. You have given it to the Board as a whole. It now belongs to the Board. Is there any discussion? If you follow the full Rules of Roberts rules, the person that makes the motion gets to make the first discussion. We're a little bit less formal in that, but is there any discussion about that motion? We would have it. At that point, we call for the question, we call for the vote. All those in favor? Yea or nay? You can abstain. I have my own personal opinion about abstaining. I feel like you're here to either say yes or no. I don't like abstaining, but it is a legal response. It doesn't count in the vote. So if you have too many people that abstain, something's wrong with the motion, we should go back to it. Consent agenda. Consent agenda. If we weren't on camera, I would sing the consent agenda song. I made one up, but I'm not gonna sing it tonight. Consent agenda. There is never discussion with the consent agenda. The whole point of putting it on the consent agenda is it's items that have already been discussed, routine in nature, don't need to have any further discussion. That being said, if there is something on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled, you can do that. Preferably say something ahead of time to the Board Chair so that they will know, why are you pulling this? What's going on? Because that moves quickly. And if we get to a motion and a second on consent agenda, and you haven't said, hey, I'd like to pull item number two and put it down here, we're already past that point. So. So it's the same thing. I move to approve the consent agenda. Second, no discussion. Yes or no? Up or down? That's all there is, and then you go on to it. So that's, that's kind of with motions and things. We can go down the road of amendments, but in a shortcut, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. If Blake makes a motion, we're all gonna wear green today. Holly seconds it. Someone says, I don't wanna wear green, I wanna wear purple. I move to amend the original motion. I wanna wear purple. You get a second on purple, you vote on purple. And now the first motion is dead. We're voting on purple. If purple doesn't pass, we're back to the first motion for green. That's how that works. So I know we had a couple of those layered up before.
Passes, you do not re-vote on the motion. Once it's amended, then you, so, no, you do vote on the motion.
You vote on the motion only if the sec, if the amendment doesn't pass.
Okay, so.
So we're gonna wear green, you want, so we're gonna wear green.
Question, could we've done this differently?
We've done it, not.
Yeah, okay, so if, I'm trying to think of a school-relevant one. Let's say, we say, you know, I move to approve this contract and amount not to exceed $250,000, and seconded. And then somebody else says, in the discussion even, you say, okay, so $250,000 accomplishes all of this, and Jordan's like, no, it doesn't. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's not the scope. So then we say, well, what would it take? And he's like, well, $300,000 would accomplish all of it. So then somebody else says, I wanna amend the motion to approve the contract and amount not to exceed $300,000. That amendment is approved or voted on. If it's approved, it's not that that becomes a motion to be voted on, it's just the motion, and it also passed. You're not merely accepting the amendment to the motion, you're accepting the whole motion. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. So if I said it wrong, but that's, she's looking at it. Sarah's looking up. Did y'all get your cheat sheet?
I think the new people don't. I can use a word smarter.
Okay, so she hasn't laminated a cheat sheet, are you sure?
There's been times where like, we've had a motion and we added something to, we, the amendment added something to the motion. So then you vote on the amendment, and then you would still vote on the main motion because it had that other part that was on it, and you added something into it.
Right, because yours of saying, instead of 250, we're going to 300, 300 becomes the deal. You wouldn't go back and vote on the 250. 250 went away.
With a, with a motion amendment, aren't you first, your first vote is on whether you're even accepting that amendment into the language of the motion, right? It doesn't have to do with the motion itself. Like, I could, there's, there's situations where I could accept an amendment to the motion but not support the motion itself, even so, right?
Right.
Like, I could, I could say, oh, Chris has a good point why she's amending it. I'll accept it. We have discussion. I'm like, I don't like that amendment.
And that's fine, then you vote no on it.
On the amendment itself.
On the amendment.
Okay, so. So back to that example. If I make that amendment, and let's say Kathy is like, well, that makes a lot of sense why he made the $300,000, but she still has an issue with the contract itself. All she's voting on is the amendment. Right? Because let's say, then the only way that she would get back to the original motion would be to reject the amendment. So, so some people are voting to approve, to accept the amendment, and some are voting to reject the original motion anyway.
And you could still do that. But I would be advised then that you not approve the amendment and go back to your conversation with the original.
Okay.
Go back and start there.
I would, I would, I would just request of Board Leadership that anytime we're in that position, like, that's clearly, clearly expressed to Board Members.
Right.
Like, if you accept this amendment, it is a vote to accept the motion.
Right.
I do, I would just ask for that, as a lamer.
Right. Good to know.
Yeah, cuz I, I think this is saying you, you vote on it in reverse order. So my understanding would be you would still vote on the amendment, and then it changes the main motion.
Right.
And then you would still vote on the main motion.
Right. As long, and it's, that's kind of an odd one to, to, to do, but.
Bad at coming up with examples.
Well, but then to change the contract, you would have, so you could vote to approve the amendment.
So, so right, right, right.
Go back and vote no to the contract.
Right.
Then you could bring a motion to.
Yeah, so an amendment, you can insert or add words to a paragraph. You can strike out words, you would take something out of the main motion. Or you could strike out and insert, so you would be substituting, like, using instance, changing that dollar amount.
So then what it would be, you're right, then what it would be, Blake, is those in favor of the motion to make it $300,000, yes or no? The original motion's been amended, it's now $300,000. Because I was thinking you were saying we'd go back and vote on 250. 250's gone.
It's dead.
It's dead. So the motion then becomes, now we're gonna vote on contract for 300. Kathy still says, I don't wanna end up regardless of whether it's 300 or 150, right? Okay. What else did we have on our list? And this is, this can be a short meeting tonight. It's just kind of going through, you know, checking on, on what's going on.
See, the main ones you had mentioned were meeting guidelines and communication responses.
Yeah, so that was kind of the, the big one. Expect, yes, 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 sorry.
I have one for you, and whether we have the answers or not, or we wanna put it on future agenda. But in regards to meetings and communications, what would be the, just to have it restated, because I'm pretty sure I know, meeting in person? You know, back in the day, there was a time I was an employee and a city manager. So when I was addressing the council in this case, I would have to say, I am Kathy Keatley, parent at West Gresham, and I want to speak to you. Versus, I am, I mean, there has to be an opportunity for all of us to speak on behalf of whatever the subject is, in schools, in something else.
So, in the community, is what you're trying to, okay, yeah.
And that I'm not representing the Board, but I still get to speak. So talk about the protocol for doing that.
Right, so, and, and actually, kind of the way you said it is, is very clear. If the Board has not taken action to support or not support something, or you know, back to the, the Board hasn't decided to paint school buses purple. And so Kathy wants to talk about the purple school buses. Kathy can go and say, I'm Kathy as a community member, and I want purple school buses. The Board has not taken an action on that. If you say, I'm Kathy, Gresham Barlow School Board Member, it sounds like the Board is in favor of that. So I think you're, you're right. We, we are citizens in the community. We have, we're parents, we're, we're folks. Just being really clear that if the Board has not taken a stand on something, you're not speaking for the Board. you're not speaking for the board. And again, not everyone in the community may understand that if you say, I'm here as a board member, but, all they hear is, I'm here as a board member. And they will think that you've made a decision that reflects what the board wants to do. So it's a tricky line. Because sometimes they do wanna hear from us because we're board member.
I think also ineffective board members out in the community.
What's that, Lily?
I think ineffective board members out in the community. And I don't know that it's over contentious things, but you know, I, if if one of us is invited to speak at, you know, a social club, like Lions or, you know, one of them. I think it's fair to, there, you're there because you have information. But I think just a disclaimer that says, I'm just an individual board member.
Correct.
You know, and here's where we're at in the process. I I think just, I I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, I don't think we're so monolithic that we don't all have individual opinions. I think it's the way that we express those opinions. And and the process that matters.
And and if it's something that the board has taken up or not taken up, then I think that's where, just be mindful of that. But yeah, absolutely. Go speak to the Rotary, they'll have us, absolutely. And talk about what's going on in the district, talk about the things that we have happening.
Well, and that would kind of be a clause, I think. So if I happen to be at the Lions, and I'm a member of the Lion, whatever. Or the Elks, let's say, I'm a better elf. Then I could get up, if they say, hey Kathy, you're on the board, would you mind speaking? Well, I could, because I'm on the board, and given the information that I know that the board hasn't addressed it, they haven't made an official policy, but here's where I know. That would still be allowed as long as I was really clear on the information that I was sharing.
And there may still be people who see it differently, and we just work it.
And just maybe as a, not required procedurally, but it might be nice then to email the board chair, hey, I had this conversation here tonight. Sure, that's not required, but nice.
That is, actually, that is kind of nice. That is, that is something that if you are speaking somewhere, you hear something out in the community, something comes up, drop a note tomorrow to the board chair, whoever that is at the time, just let her know so that it's it's there. Whether or not it rises to the level also of the superintendent, but you know, what what Byron knows, he knows what he knows, Byron don't know. It's it's a, it's there, that information is there. We're coming up on what may be an interesting holiday season with in and out of town. Let Sarah know if you're gonna be unavailable for a meeting. Okay?
I I have one more. And only for the boards, especially the newbies, because I experienced it, and I had, so there was a committee meeting that I wanted to attend. I hadn't been, privy to the conversations of the prior board, I wanna go. So I would think, oh, I could just go as a citizen. Well, I can, but if in this case, this instance, I called and checked, and I was able to go, but only because Myra wasn't at the meeting, or the third committee person wasn't in attendance. If I wanted to go, I would have had to give Sarah a 24-hour notice to post that I was going to be in the presence of three other board members, but it would not be a form, I was there as a citizen. So, I mean, I I am so glad it worked out that I got to go. I would have been disappointed if I couldn't have, and I wouldn't have, but be only because I didn't know the procedure. So not that you all wanna be going to different meetings, but if you do, 24-hour notice to Sarah.
And I believe, speaking of committees, on our board docs is where committees are listed. So if you requested to be on a committee, it's on there.
And and actually, what happened then with Director Behrens? Because he wasn't appointed when we did assignments, so does he take?
We have more committees coming up. Okay, and I don't know that. I don't know that.
Another question, I saw the list that has all of the appointments to those committees. Who would be best to ask when those committees meet and where they meet?
Either Sarah, or was there one in particular, or just in general, just in general? The people that are involved on it, you know, so, but Sarah should know when we're meeting as well. And there are, I know there's another committee that will be coming up. It's one that that's called as needed. It was a legislative deal that they did that is a, an equity response committee. I don't know what they call it, that's the best I can remember what it is. That if there is an equity incident that rises to a certain level, we have to call a committee and go through some of the review of it. Do you remember Amanda, what that one was? It was, it was one that they put in. It was response to something that they did in Lake House, Wevo. And so they decided that was a really good idea, and the school board member that's on the Lake House, Wevo board is also, I think, she's a senator, she represented.
Oh, Wagner?
Yeah.
He's a senator.
I know you're talking about her, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I should check, but I know him. But anyhow, so in the event that something like that comes up, we have to call a committee together. It's not super defined when and how we do that, but it's in there. And so that would be one that we might wanna just put on our list, but nobody would be populating it right now.
We'll, I'll have the, the team do a little bit of research, cuz I think I know which one that it, but I don't want them to speak. Think it has to do, there is a, a resistance in within the school.
Yeah.
And then we need a committee to review to make sure that we've done all the steps, and then that the board knows, uh, kind of how we're responding to it.
Right, but a board member has to know it, yeah.
Correct, and a board member needs to be available to participate in kind of a overview committee, but I'll I'll ask the team to kind of confirm that, and we'll, and we'll get that back, and I'll send them.
I'm not sure if it's passed. I'm double checking if it did. Send a bill 732?
I'm pretty sure that it did, cuz OSBA sent us some stuff about it. So I'm pretty sure, but not a hundred percent sure.
Would would you like to share about the the library, uh, has some some documents?
We did. I sent out an email, just a reminder that the library has the contracts that are generally our service contracts, so the SRO, the school research, shouldn't use a lot of acronyms. The SRO, intergovernmental agreement, is up there, the food service with First Stu-, no, First Stu- with the Sodexo is up there. The transportation, and the transportation one, you will notice, has several copies because there have been amendments and memorandums of understanding. We've changed the contract a little bit. It's a longer term contract. We didn't wanna go back through and rewrite the whole thing, so we just added to it. And then the superintendent agreement is up there as well. So as there are contracts that come up that are relevant to the board, that's where we'll post those. I think I sent out as well a reminder to the board that the employment contracts, the, what we call the union contracts, are listed on the Gresham Barlow website under HR. And it's right near, you just scroll down just a little bit down the page, and all of them are there. So those are available as well. Anything else that has come up where you went, oh, I didn't know that, so?
I I. That's okay. I have one more, because I assume, you know, I thought the negotiations are live.
Yes.
Yeah, so if I just had nothing going that day and wanted to pop in and see it.
You can watch it online.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Online, as I just said out loud, online's fine, but it is no way, I don't have to really notice anybody.
Right, because, right, because online is strictly viewing.
Yeah.
There's no interaction.
I just wanna stand up.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think our next meeting is December 6th. I started saying a week, cuz we got Thanksgiving coming up. Yeah, yeah, and and that one will be an all-day meeting. With the, what is that, December 2nd?
It's the 6th.
December 2nd, yeah.
The 6th.
It's the 6th.
The 6th, because it's Monday.
It's the 6th.
It's the 6th, it's Monday.
There's a reason why this.
Yeah, the 2nd, the 2nd is the board meeting.
Not our board meeting.
December 2nd is our board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
She knows.
Negotiations is the 6th.
Right.
Board meeting is the 6th.
Board meeting is the 6th, yes.
Right, right, right. So, so yes, you can pop on there and watch it as well. That one may not be the most interesting one, because we'll be going out in caucus, and caucus with the negotiations is not straight. It's only when we're all together as both sides, but when we go off the caucus, that information is not straight. So any questions about bargaining, any questions about the other training, any question about training, I shouldn't go to bargaining, that's not on the agenda.
No, I think this is a good, um, a good process. I would, I would, I propose that we really start, as you did today, with aspects of boardsmanship that tie directly to our operating agreements. We start there, and then we branch out further.
And I do have a couple of other, let's see, I've got my stuff all over the place. I'm gonna walk over here off camera for a minute. Now Blake, you're on camera. Here we go. Yeah, so operationally, we will have some check-in time when we get to our February meeting. February meeting, where we'll be talking about our mission and our vision and our goals.
I think the date on that needs to be reconsidered.
Right, the date is what?
It is February 18th.
Okay.
Because we couldn't do the 25th because the superintendent is not as able.
Actually, I thought it came together, but.
So the current date is the 18th.
And then it's the 25th.
It's the 25th.
And then we were looking at.
Yeah, so you panicked a bit.
You panicked.
Six for the AESD conference.
Cuz there may have been a problem with the vice chair attending as well.
So is it the 18th or is it the 25th?
No, no.
It's the 25th, sorry.
It's the 25th, yeah.
It was supposed to be the 18th.
Right.
So if that works for everyone, I I will go in and amend the calendars, so the shows.
So yes, so February 25th instead of the 18th, does that work? Yes, yes. Okay, okay.
It works.
All right, so that one works. All right, so we're gonna make that. I just had another thought that just came in mind. So I don't know what it was. One of the other things that I.
You talked about operational, do you use anything?
What's that?
Yeah, you said you had talked about operationally at the planning meeting.
Operational agreements.
Yeah. No, the other thing that I was gonna break forward, I have a wonderful collection of books that I have used in training, that used at workshops, used at sessions over the years. I would love to share those with folks. Some of them you can't get anymore, and some of them are kind of spending because they were small publishers, and they had kind of a small audience, so they didn't exactly hit the Amazon best list. But some of them are very short. Essential Board Book. You know, it was a local Pacific Northwest group that did it. Got some very nice, straightforward things that are in it. The Essential Work of a School Board for Effective Governance is another one, and then there are some others that get really far into it. But I think we should do a little bit of of board work as well as some books that I think Myra had brought forward. White Fragility, Cast, Mediocre. All of those are good ones for us to to touch on and and read, get some exposure to. Have common language as we work through some things. So so we can have a book list as well of, when you don't have anything else to read, we can provide some suggestions for you.
For for training, I would encourage also, we give budget 101 every year. I would encourage a budget 201.
Okay.
For us.
Okay.
Just so we know how to read them, how we read a, how to read a budget document, how to understand fund structures.
Okay.
I think would be, even even honestly, the difference between a caper and the budget, and how you, how we should re-bow, you know, I I think all of that would be.
And some of those, the the comparison, the data things, any of that.
Yeah.
And then you can top that stuff.
And then the 301 and 401, because I know it's in Jordan's wheelhouse.
Uh-huh, it is, it is.
The guy I'm gonna call for is equity, equity in budgeting.
Yes.
Cuz it's a passion of his, and I think he'd make us better board members if we let him explore that side of his profession.
Yeah, yeah.
This has been a great day for me.
Well, I move that we keep the strategic planning meeting on Josh's birthday.
Well, I'll begin someplace else.
Not a real motion, by the way.
I I will be, and actually, I'm gonna go. Motion dies for life for second. So, sorry, because my birthday is the day after the strategic, so you'll have plenty of time to go shopping and have a variety. So, but yeah, that's a, that's been a deal. So yeah, a motion doesn't always, if you don't wanna second it, you don't have to, but if I say, this is an action item, and Jordan would like to spend the money to buy something, then I may say, this needs to have a second. This is an action item. And and we'll go through with that, but but otherwise, anything else on general, we're just starting some real basic stuff right now, and our key people, if you have any questions, Sarah Avery. A plus Sarah, absolutely. You don't have to share her cell phone number, I'm not gonna say it now because it's public. But if you don't have her number, make sure you have it. Yeah, yeah. And Mr. Hugh. Those are the two folks that we talked to. Yeah, those are the folks.
I have a money number.
And, you know, if we contact James, and it's somebody who says, you know, I'd like to have you call and talk to so-and-so, great. But don't go talk to so-and-so first so that James knows who you're talking to. Cuz it may be something as well, if two or three board members say, hey, I'd like to hear about this, James can say, hey, or Sarah, that sounds like something that we should put on an agenda for the whole board to hear about. And so that's always an opportunity as well. Okay? Anything else? Because otherwise, I'm gonna win the award for cutting this meeting, right?
Which I'm fully in favor of.
Sarah or Myra's.
Myra's gonna be jealous.
I know, I know. Myra's gonna be like, wait, you did what?
Or you'll be doing it every time.
Anything else? OSBA, you know, they've got online stuff. If you've not taken advantage of their online, they used to charge for the videos until I finally said, you've already made the video, there's no extra cost for that, make them free. So basic board stuff is all free on the OSBA website. You should be able to, Sarah, do they have to register through you to set that up first time, or do they just set up their own email address and do it? Is there verification someplace?
I sent in a, there's a board roster that I update. I may need to check on Dr. Farns. But yeah, they, everyone else should be on there, since it's a roster that you update every year.
Okay, okay. Mine, I may need to update because it still has my personal email address associated with it, because back when I got on OSBA, we didn't have a board email. Um, but but go through those. They're free, they're available, and also everyone should have done their Safe Schools training. Everybody got that done? Do you know about that, Sean?
I've done it through.
He's done it through his other employer, so.
So it's every year?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've done it annually? Okay, so you're good.
And Sydney did verify that all board members had completed it.
Yay, okay, all right, so all board members have done that, so.
Sydney did verify that Dr. Farns has also completed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so anything else? No? Normally, if we wanna do things actually officially, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Thank you. And then, all right, so it's been moved by Blake, seconded by Holly to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor? I, it's sure, thank you.